It's nineteen hundred hours.
Yes, I know.
You guys heard none of that, right? I clicked on you, but I didn't push hard enough. Well, I silently called them. It's still seven. I called the meeting to order at seven o'clock. I see all board members are present and welcome to everyone else who is attending as well. I also just wanted to make note that even though on the agenda it says regular board meeting, this is a board meeting, a board development meeting. So the agenda is a little bit different than a regular board meeting would be. And also want to remind everyone that we have interpretation, which is fantastic. Thank you to those who are doing that, but also reminder for all of us, especially for me, to speak slowly for the interpreters.
Especially for me.
We are now on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approved tonight's agenda as listed.
A second.
Comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 With aye, and with that, the motion has passed. We are now on to item three. And as I mentioned before, since this is a special board development meeting, which is an opportunity for the board to spend some time together diving into topics and governance plans. I'd like to have all the public comments about the Equity Action Plan and COVID-19 updates at the beginning of the meeting during this public comment time. So if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on any of the items, or just to speak, please use the raise hand feature now. So we know how many we have, and then we'll move from there. And can somebody, for people who might be new, can someone share how they do the raise hand feature? It always takes me a minute to figure that out.
It should be, I believe, at the bottom of the screen or next to their name. They should have the option to be able to raise their hand.
Thank you. We'll give it just another minute, see if there's anyone else would like to speak. All right, so let's go ahead. So we have two people who would like to speak. So reminder, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And it looks like we have Selena and then Rebecca. Aleah, if you could do that for us.
Yes, actually, I have Rebecca Lucky up first and then followed by Selena Y. So Rebecca, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I, my name's Rebecca Lucky, and I have a second grader and a kindergartner in the Hutos program at San Miguel. My public comment tonight is to inform you of my personal experience, my observations of other parents around me, and the need for mindful decision making around equity, which ironically is a topic for tonight. Family health, working families, and more importantly, women's issues. Before I launch into this, I just want to say I'm impressed with the teachers who've been able to keep the students engaged during Zoom. However, the undue stress and financial harm of virtual learning is hurting us families. There are independent learning sessions that make this not at all independent of parents' time. And there's much more I want to talk about, but I just want to focus on solutions too. And the point is that this isn't working for working parents. Working parents may or have already faced pay cuts in order to educate our children. And I think that is putting us families in a difficult position that the school board really needs to be sensitive to. And I want to know what you expect us to do. Do we not pay for something in exchange for education? On top of that, there are decisions that need to be made around addressing women and mothers' roles in the family. Studies have shown time and time again that we bear the more of the emotional labor already in the household and that these decisions add, to add mothers as teachers assistants to our plate are impacting our mental health and well-being. And here's what I request the school board address in the next thirty days. To consider stop school completely, hold students back a year. This gives more time to teachers and in the administration to figure out a better solution if this drags out longer than six weeks, which we know it might until there's a vaccine. We need individual check-ins and assessments that are thoroughly analyzed and reported back to the school board, not broad surveys that don't really tell you what we have to sacrifice in order to make this work. Provide stipends for families to access tutors for help. Provide English instructions in Spanish for Spanish-speaking mothers. I've met two families on my block that are unable to help their children because they can't read English well. School needs to be completely canceled when there is an emergency, whether that's a wildfire, poor air quality, or some other issue such as a pandemic. The learning environment is incredibly different and times are stressful. I speak about myself and other mothers that are exhausted, filled with guilt, and the never-ending cycle of sacrifice, which we did sign up for. But this isn't okay, and I use my voice to say to you, no, I don't give consent to this. I'm not ashamed, and I don't feel guilty because I know I'm not alone. This is not okay to jeopardize my family's stability, my financial well-being, the equity of other children, and to carry on when the state is on fire. No. I know there are working mothers in the district, and you may be one of them. But I think we forget or think it is possible to do it all because that's what we women do all the time. And I want to say, stop. Stop treating us like we can handle it all. I challenge you to stop making decisions like the system and culture conditioning has taught you to. Think about where we are today and the health of families, the role that women play in providing stability to their families. We are the pillars, and make decisions from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next up is Selena Y., followed by Yifteq Golin.
Hi, this is Selena. I was hoping to sort of hear what you had to say about the updates first, but since we're going first, I have two things. One is I was a little concerned about the, how the social-emotional learning is being held or handled in school. A lot of it is videos and basically a short, you know, question-answer with the class, as far as I can tell from my kids' classes. But really, what the kids need is a place where they can socialize. And it's really difficult when you're in a class with a lot of kids that you don't know, to get to know them. So basically, my kids are friends with the friends I've had before, but they're not really making any new friends or not really getting to know their classmates. So I'm hoping that there's some way that you can sort of integrate a little bit more into the class time or have some sort of structure for recess or something where they can actually talk and get to know each other. The other thing is totally unrelated. It's about the hotspots. I know that there's been a little bit of a backlog. We actually asked for one, and from the one week of school that we've had, we've used up half of the allotted data. We saw on the hotspot that there's a 20 gig data limit, and we've used over half already. So we're a little worried about how is that going to happen, and how are we supposed to stretch this out to a month? And we tried to use it with two kids. That didn't work, so it's down to one kid on one hotspot and one on the home internet. But I think with others that may not even have home internet, that could be a problem. So I just wanted to bring that up and see if you guys were aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Selena. Next up is Yifteq, and followed by Sharice Poston.
Hey, guys. So my, I have a very simple question, and I asked it a couple of times. We don't have any family around here. We don't have any friends that can keep up on our kids. We are two working parents. Please answer us. What are we supposed to do? Please? But we really need to get answers, so I really want to hear from you. So I have like one and a half minutes. Can somebody please explain what are we supposed to do? And you can mute myself.
Thank you.
Mr. Golin, perhaps you're, we could arrange a meeting with you and your principal to respond to your specific questions.
And you can email me, and I can help set that up, or I'll reach out to you, and we can set that up. Next up is Sharice, followed by Michelle Koo.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sharice Poston from Columbia Middle School. I just, I already heard Selena addressing this, just the issue of hotspots. In terms of virtual school, I'm really impressed by my students right now. I'm a teacher at Columbia Middle School. They are engaging. They are trying their best. They're doing a really great job. But the lack of reliable and high-speed internet is really frustrating and difficult for many of my students. And it's, they're having a hard time engaging with virtual school because their Wi-Fi is so unreliable. So I'm, I guess I'm commenting right now, asking just for the district to maybe try to speed that up so that more kids can engage more thoroughly in school, just because when you're on Zoom and then you're doing other apps to learn, like Paradek and whatnot, it can be a strain on kids' Wi-Fi. So I'm just saying that it's really an urgent need for kids to have not, not just Wi-Fi, but high-speed, reliable Wi-Fi in order to engage with virtual school. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharice. Next up is Michelle. Sorry, unmuted the wrong person. Now you should be able to go, Michelle. Sorry about that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Michelle Koo. I'm a teacher at Columbia Middle School, and I want to raise a concern. Currently, our students have thirty minutes for lunch. Our students on free and reduced-price lunch are supposed to walk to the nearest school, wait and pick up a lunch, walk home, eat, use the restroom in thirty minutes. And I'm worried students are going to either end up being tardy, which is not their fault, or choose not to get food. And neither of those seem like fair options to ask of our students or to put them in that position. The second thing, I just am curious if hotspots are delayed in being ordered as the district explored possibly paying for in-home internet versus Wi-Fi families that do have stable shelter and home and only using the hotspots for those who do not have stable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And that's all I'm seeing at this moment.
All of the comments, correct?
Yep.
Thank you, Aleah, and thank you for those who made comments.
Michelle, I can't hear you very well. Can you speak up or do what you were doing before? Because I could hear you before.
Yeah, well, I'm using the Chromebook. My husband has a meeting tonight, so he's using his laptop. So I am on, so I will speak louder and slowly. And I'm really loud, but it doesn't sound really loud to you guys, does it? Okay, I'm like almost yelling right now, so it feels weird. Okay, I just want to share briefly, any of the public after you hear COVID updates, if you have any comments you would like to make, reminder that you can always send an email. Aleah, correct me if I'm wrong. It's actually, will you just say what the email is? The meeting comments. Is it meetingcomments@nsns.org?
Yes.
So feel free after updates if you have comments. And then if you have specific questions related to school going on right now or issues with devices, there's a different email for that. Aleah, what is that one?
Thank you, Reed. You beat me to it. I was going to put it in the chat. COVID-19 concerns at SCSD. Is that what we were thinking of? Okay, yeah, COVID-19 concerns at sesd.org. I'll also put that in the chat.
Thank you. And then if people have specific questions about hotspots, should they send their questions to that email? Or is there a better place to send hotspot questions to?
I think we're recommending, from the troubleshooting to start at the school site, we've put together some guides, because again, we're just trying to make sure that the units that we have. But I would say let's start at the school site because they've been able to identify some of the issues. And then, yeah, and then they know how to escalate if there's broken parts or we've been having to swap a few out for warranty issues, et cetera, so.
Fantastic. So with administration or your teachers at your school sites?
Could we, Michelle, could we just ask that we, because I'm curious to know about the hotspots, like the limitation on the data?
This is what I was going to say. So during the COVID-19 update staff, if you could touch on, I mean, you might already be planning to cover it, but if you could touch on SCL a little bit and ways students can socialize with each other, touch on the hotspots, which I think was what Reed was kind of mentioning. And then also the free and reduced meal, the middle school, right? There's that only thirty-minute window. That was interesting. So if staff could touch on those during the COVID-19 update reopening, that would be great. Okay, board, was there anything else from those comments that you want touched on during the updates that I missed? We're good? Okay. All right, toggling between my notes and my, so we are now on to four. So review and discussion, the COVID-19 updates. I assume we're starting with Dr. Gallagher.
Yes, and actually, we're going to go through the team, and we'll start with Jeremy. They'll each take a few minutes.
Yes, so tonight, my COVID-19 update will include information on hotspots, enrollment updates, and then kind of our supportive employees with the COVID-19 testing and tracking that we've been put into place. So hotspot distribution, I'm going to cover the availability first. So if you recall, last spring, we had 250 units that we deployed during distance learning. And then we deployed our parent information in preparation for our opening into virtual school. So our initial demand, we ordered approximately 400 additional devices to be ready to deploy on the first day of school. Shortly before the start of school, it became clear that the demand was even higher, so we put an additional order in for about another hundred units. And then now that we've hit the second week of school, there's been a kind of a larger wave. And I think the public speakers kind of hit on this, is the realities of virtual school are taking hold. So we have another order of 200 in that are supposed to arrive on Monday. So that's going to bring up 950 units. And so I think that's, that was enough to address the second wave of need, given the fact that now that everyone has had an experience in one week of virtual school and understanding the requirements and what it's taking. Because I think there is many differences from our distance learning program in the spring to the virtual school now. And so we're trying, I think, obviously, the demand has grown because of the internet bandwidth. So addressing the two-gigabyte monthly data limit, these are unlimited plans. And I think the two-gig limit on there, yeah, so it won't run out, depending on even if you exceed that two-limit, because the plans are unlimited provided by T-Mobile's Empower Ed program. I do know that over time that the, the, what is it? The availability of the high-speed two-gig bandwidth will come down just because of that. We will investigate continuing how to increase that bandwidth with T-Mobile as our next conversation, as we adjust and making sure that we can meet the demand of our, of our, of our students and parents participating in the program. And again, I want to reiterate that even when you hit that two-gigabyte limit, it doesn't stop. It's two gigs of high-speed internet upfront, but an unlimited data plan based on the 4G program. Regarding the opportunities for us to explore other ways to increase bandwidth within our community, I think we put out information periodically about other, what is it? Low-cost, high-speed internet options in the home. We will continue to explore other options, but for now, the hotspot is our best bet because the Empower Ed program, not only it being unlimited data, the Empower Ed program has a, what is that, a SEPA Child Internet Protection Act, like grade filter that T-Mobile is on there with through these hotspots as well. So we know that we're adding the, kind of that extra protection when we hand out a district hotspot. So we want to just make sure that there is availability, but also the access that we're presenting has the proper safeguards in place. But that's not to say that we won't continue to explore other options because as, as virtual school continues and the demand on internet and broadband access for that, we want to make sure that we're kind of pivoting. So to recap, 950 units up from 250 last year, unlimited data, and we will continue to explore other options regarding hotspot and internet activity as we receive feedback from, from students and parents. I'm going to maybe pause there just because that was one of the items. Any other questions from the board then on that item?
So Jeremy, do you feel confident that we can basically serve everybody with what they need? Maybe not if it's immediate, like at some point when we get it all together?
Yes, so we're in constant communications with the school sites. And again, you did notice the previous orders on the previous board agendas. This, this next wave is another 200 to really meet that need. And again, it's because now everyone has, you know, kind of dug into the, and so the reality is known. But no, we will continue to incrementally make sure that we have that capacity for our employees. But again, also to the point of also exploring other options as well. We're trying to meet the immediate need, but also knowing that this will maybe persist for a while. Look for other internet continuing options as well, so.
There was a time, oh gosh, quite a few years ago, maybe ten years ago or something, that the city was looking at doing Wi-Fi across the city. Oh, that would have been so nice. It's too bad.
So I had a question. When we had our Santa Clara County School Boards meeting, there were trustees who were talking about connectivity problems, interfacing Zoom with Chromebooks. Has there been any issues with interface on our Chromebook platform with Zoom?
Other than the Zoom outage we experienced on Monday, I don't think we're hearing that directly. And then to, actually, to be honest, there's been a lot of internet traffic around issues with older Chromebooks and Google meets, but that's, but no, as far as Zoom, we're doing okay, other than the Zoom outage.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll just actually speak anecdotally to that. I know nothing about technology, but I have been wondering that. So two of my kids have Chromebooks. One has an iPad, and the two with Chromebooks seem to have more issues on their Zoom meetings than my kid on iPad. So again, I know nothing about technology, but anecdotally, I would say that there is a little, not huge issues, but it disconnects sometimes and you lose a minute or two or whatever.
Excellent. That's great anecdotal information, and we will interrogate that, so. And investigate. Sorry, I keep, I misuse that word sometimes, so.
Thanks, Jeremy.
No worries. Moving on to my second topic then, enrollment update. I know we tried to give you a ten-day count, but I figured this board meeting fell today. So our five-day count, we are down overall. And again, this falls with, I guess, COVID-19 related, just because we're opening in shelter in place. Our ten-day enrollment, I'm sorry, our five-day enrollment count for grades TK to eight is we are down to 6,030 students enrolled. So we are down roughly 350 enrolled students from last year. We know that common trends tend to tick up, but that's kind of a lower starting point that we were necessarily anticipating. I think we were thinking down 250 this year, so just that effect. Anecdotally, we know it's primarily in the lower grades, which could make sense in the sense that just given the virtual school setting. But we'll continue to take a look at those numbers and staffing as we move into the ten-day count, which is, I'll give, I think, a more concrete information on that, but thought we would provide that information to you.
I think we were at 6,200 last meeting when you told us, two weeks ago. Yeah.
Preschool is holding its own. So again, I tried to break that number out according to Power School, and you know, maybe Tasha has, if I'm wrong, but we're at roughly 155 students, and that's up from around 140. But I know preschool sometimes kind of can fluctuate, so that program is, is stable, so.
So from the meeting today, Mary Ann Dewan indicated that the numbers for TK and K are down countywide and that they are going to be starting a program around engagement and enrollment for younger-age students. The concern being that families may be holding back because kindergarten is not required. And so it may be easier for them to adjust their family needs to not having their student in school at this time.
Correct. And I think we kind of shared that, yeah, that's one theory. And we get, we're getting anecdotal bits of information on that. One note related to that on how we're trying to take, I guess, a kind of an equitable look at COVID-19 especially, is we have, after three days of school, right? That's normally if we've had no contact or no show, you know, we would dis-enroll just because we, you know, sometimes parents, they're highly motivated to tell us when they move into the district and register, but not so much if they, you know, moved out of the area. But just given the remote factor and the starting of school in virtual settings, we are, you know, just taking extra steps, making sure that if they haven't had any contact, school sites are doing a great job of following up with additional phone calls, emails, and in some cases, some home visits. So instead of just following our normal process, we are trying to take into account the circumstances that we're facing in our community. So I just wanted to give our schools staff a huge shout-out for that. And then lastly, regarding our employees, we've been putting a lot of the protocols and practices into place. So we've gotten out the information regarding the notices of our, the protocols that we have in place and our COVID leave checklist and those types of things for our employees. In addition, our tracker, what is it, our symptom tracker is up and running for employees to make sure they screen prior to arriving to the school site. And then lastly, we are, I am starting to slow down in my speaking for just a little bit about the partnership that you approved last time with El Camino Hospital. Our first two dates of our testing program are in place, and so we have gotten that information out to our employees. And so again, we are happy with, to be able to offer that, that service to try to keep everyone safe in our community. So again, those dates are September 3rd and September 13th. And that concludes my part. I think I'm handing it off to Tasha Dean.
All right, I had to unmute myself. Good evening, board. We have been very, very busy. It's hard to believe we're just been in school about a week, a week and a day, and so much has happened. But I'll start off with an update about independent study. To date, we have about 215 students enrolled. Some of this week's celebrations and challenges are around the technical learning, the blending of providing information, supplemental information to students and families, and then also teachers learning a new system and platform and integrating our current platform systems that we're using, and then also trying to provide the same level of support to parents and students that need it. So a lot of work has gone into that. And then just really learning the pacing on how to provide information to students in a way that's meaningful to them. Some students are pretty savvy, so they were going through content a little faster than needed. But the teachers are now figuring out how to assist them with some of that pacing so that their parents are aware that they're actually on the system sometime a little bit more than was planned by the parents and the teacher, but we're working through those challenges. But overall, I would say things are going well. We're learning more about the program, but we're also learning more about independent study and what will work for the particular students that we're serving at this time. But I would say generally speaking, there's been some ups and downs, but generally speaking, we're getting, I think at this time, fortunately, more positive feedback than we are negative. So that's positive, and I hope that continues as we learn more. And our teachers and our families inform us regarding the program, independent study, as well as the platform that we're using. In addition to that, kind of transitioning from independent study a little bit, looking at special education, we definitely have some hotspots. We kind of went into the school year knowing that we would have potentially some students who were going to need more one-to-one types of supports. And so we are really looking at that very critically right now. really looking at that very critically right now. The updates that we received just recently about some possible options where we might be able to begin to have some students on campus. So we are excited to learn more about that and are beginning to research and look at what options may exist. And then we're also have, we're working on some plans in order to provide some one-to-one instruction for students and families at alternative times for students who are accessing slower or don't seem to be accessing certain programs. So we're looking at that and trying to figure out how to deliver on some of the critical needs that have come to our attention. In addition to that, social workers have started engaging with the principals a little bit to see where some particular family needs are. We've also began our work with the shelter, trying to figure out what their needs are and get those things taken care of for those students who are residing in the shelter. We do have one or two students in the shelter who are actually in and out. And so it's making it a little bit more difficult to actually serve those particular students. But we are definitely on top of who they are and trying to provide those particular needs. I would also like to give you an update with regards to preschool. The state preschool, as Jeremy talked about, we continue to enroll students. We are having a little bit of interesting conversation, I would say, as professionals on how do we assess? And so we are doing quite a few diagnostic placements. And so what I mean by that is if we really can't legitimately assess the students to determine if they really are in special education, we've been looking at, do we have enough information to at least place them and provide some level of support as additional assessments are pending? And so the team has been working a lot and having lots of conversations on that. We met with the psychologist yesterday and they are working as a team to really say, you know, can we just use our clinical judgment here? Or will we use some new and different assessment tools in order to assess students' learning and their particular needs? So lots of conversations. It's like I said, it's really hard to believe that we've only been in school a week, but people are really being very thoughtful and really thinking on how to access and serve students. And then the last piece I wanted to add, which kind of goes along with the assessments is that Senate Bill 117, that continues to be that we are not able to, at this time, complete initial assessments for special education. And so what we are doing now is looking very critically at any student who, whose parent has requested or an outside entity has requested an assessment. We're looking at how we can either develop an SST or some type of learning plan pending our ability to actually assess the students. So those are just some of the highlights, some of the things that we're thinking about, plans that are in place. And I think you requested that we talk a little bit more about SEL this evening. And so I think the one thing for you to know is that the principals have been working with social workers. And I know at least half, not all, but I know at least half, they are working to figure out during that lunch period on how they can have a social skills group or some type of lunch bunch type of group. And so they're looking at that. And then I'm also been talking with CHAC to see whether or not they're able to provide anything after the school day, like after three thirty, four o'clock to engage students. So we are looking at some things. We don't have anything solidified, but I would say our site administrators and, and social workers have been looking at how to provide those services. With that, are there any questions?
Any question? I, I saw an email go by about curriculum for the independent study. Can you fill me in a little more on like, there was some bumps in the road about cultural sensitivity or just the content itself?
Yes, there were some examples that were brought to our attention of things that were perceived by some that might be considered sexes or even races. I'll give you one example, for example. One of the examples was, there was a lesson with regards to President Obama, who was referenced as a black, the first black president. Well, some felt they should have used the terminology of African American, for example. And so as a result of that, they did go in, they made the changes, and they changed that language from black to African American. So what I can say is some of the things that have been brought to our, our attention, I've gone back into the program, they have either removed those things or some of those things actually had never gone into the system. They were things that were done somewhere else, but were tied back to Acelis, but it wasn't Acelis programming. And so they have been responsive. I've reached out to them on the things that we felt were concerns. But when I went back into the system, those examples did not exist anymore. So it's not perfect. We're learning. They have probably over fifteen hundred or so lessons per grade level. And so as we see things, as our teachers see things, and I did reach out to parents, I think yesterday or earlier this week, and I have asked them if they see anything or if they have questions, input, anything, please let us know so that we can address any concerns or issues that they may have.
Natasha, that's great. I had someone share with.
Bueno, eso es genial. Alguien me compartió que había una petición sobre Acelis en Hawaii y por seguro había algunas lecciones que eran, que no estaban apropiadas, por ejemplo, G's.
Like crazy, crazy stuff, but those things were removed, I, I think, long before we started using the program, like you said. So and everything, the research since that I've seen has said that Acelis has been responsive, like you said, and like trying to address this stuff. I've heard some actual Sunnyvale parents that have said there's a few things, like, there was one lesson that someone saw that said astronauts use math and sometimes even moms use math. And that was something that someone in Sunnyvale had said. I mean, I think some of these lessons are dated and that's part of the issue. And it's unfortunate that we can't have a perfect program, but I just don't think there's anything perfect right now. And I appreciate that we have a process where when somebody finds something that they're not comfortable with, they can go to their principal and then talk to you and talk to Acelis. And I'm really glad that they're being responsive to it. And that's the feedback that I got as well when I was looking into it a little bit. So at first I was freaking out because I was looking at those lessons and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, we're in trouble. But I'm really happy that it's not as bad as it seems. So.
Me too.
Yeah. And then I had a question about just the number of independent study students. I know originally there was like four hundred, then we got down to three hundred. And so you said there's two hundred and fifteen now. So are there people that are wishing that they were in independent study, but they weren't? Or is it just kind of the natural people that fell off because they wound up doing other things?
Yeah, it's a combination of, of students. But what I will say is we do still have students on the waitlist. And I think we've hired two new teachers and Jeremy can tell you how many remain on the waitlist.
Yes. So we are in the process of circling back and just, you know, understand, what is it, double checking, keeping our families that are on the waitlist up to date. And yeah, like Tasha mentioned, we are in the process of identifying additional staff members. And again, the independent study assignment that we posted for, you know, we're trying to make sure that we find the, the right fit, the right instructor for that. Because again, virtual school in its own right is different. The independent study assignment, you know, it has a lot of nuances. So we are taking our time to make sure we find, find the one or two teachers to clear that waitlist. So we are getting close, but we are trying to keep all parents on that waitlist up to date as we fill in. We have.
Did you say how many, how many there were, Jeremy?
I want to say roughly forty left. So and again, the number keeps, it, it keeps kind of going. We have sometimes a few folks that were on independent study that end up moving out of the area. So then we are able to move the information, I'm sorry, we are able to fill from the waitlist and, you know, one Z's and two Z's, in addition to increasing capacity for us to be able to accomplish, clear the waitlist. So.
And then for independent study, are they, are they all using the Acelis program in the same way, would you say? I mean, are, are kids still getting, I thought they were still going to get the workbooks and the regular curriculum and just use the Acelis for lessons. So like, they would still get the same, if they were in third grade, they'd still get the same math consumables or?
The, the teachers are designing their lessons and they're blending the two. So they are getting, they do have the curriculum, they are using the curriculum.
Okay.
Supplementing with additional lessons. Some are also using workbooks, some are using some online materials. For younger students, they're doing a lot of assignments where the parents are working with the students at home, whether it be art projects or tasks that they have them doing, or, you know, take a nature walk and find things that represent, you know, things of that nature. So they're trying to integrate it developmentally based upon the age and grade of the students.
Thank you.
Mine isn't a question. I just want to just quickly say thank you to our staff for working on this independent study and not only providing it, but then also that we're working to try to accommodate all the families. I would say most districts in the area are not providing an option like this. It's essentially virtual school or you're on your own. So I'm just grateful that we really, I think, have gone above and beyond to try to do our best to accommodate families and that we're still working on it. So thank you. I'm sorry, my thing is so quiet. I really am yelling.
We can hear you fine. Yeah. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mala.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So I'll talk about the other fifty-seven hundred students that we're serving in our virtual school model. And the first, you know, few week, like Tasha reminds us, it's just been a week of school. Boy, does it feel like more than a week for sure. It's just had its own, you know, ebbs and flows, but it's been a really good start. What was really helpful, I would say, is having the working groups that we had in summer, plan the first two weeks of school, really embedding a lot of social emotional learning and really making it more focused on making connections than starting instruction per se. So that's been a really positive, you know, rollout. I cannot say enough about how proud I am and thankful I am for the teachers and the principals we have in our district, because the principals are just working as hard as they can and being as focused as they can in engaging families. I had the option of speaking with a couple of them today. We were working on a re-engagement process that I'll talk about a little later. But they were so proud about the fact, one of the schools said we had only eight students not show up because of all the efforts they're making. And the other one talked about the goal is hundred percent attendance and they were at ninety-seven point five percent. So they're really doing, and these are both Title I schools, just by the way. So they're really doing all they can because we know if students show up, that's when we can teach them. So we are, this, this state CDE has asked us to, you know, given us some guidelines on attendance and participation and also weekly engagement tracking. So we've devised a system. I'll be sharing more about that when we do our learning continuity and attendance plan update next week, but really working on what that engagement looks like and focusing on a re-engagement plans. We have a very established process of what do we do in a tiered level of when students and families don't engage? You know, what happens after, you know, one day, two days, a week, two or three weeks, four weeks, like what is our, what are the incremental steps? Just the commitment to having students there and show up. And again, remembering that, you know, yes, it's the beginning and they're gung ho and maybe they're showing up. And then, you know, kind of ebbs a little. And then how can we keep that excitement going and keep them engaged? So professional development and our connection with teachers is really, I think our pillars, focus are on rigor and student engagement. How can we keep our students engaged as much as possible, you know, all the time? So we have PD schedule set up and Christina has been working really hard on organizing this with the principals and the teachers. We've come up with a, the Wednesdays that we have, we've named them workshop Wednesdays for collaborative learning. So we're taking away the professional development piece and really workshop Wednesdays where teachers engage collaboratively, learning together. And every other Wednesday is something that we're going to do district wide, so district professional learning community. And every other Wednesday will be more site based. So we're excited about that model. And like I said, Christina Ballantyne has been spearheading an amazing effort to get all this together. We also have our first staff development day on September eighth, which is going to be tomorrow, almost, it feels like it. And the next step that we're looking forward to, you know, once instruction sets in and once the routine sets in, is getting playworks and starting arts into the mix. So we are kind of getting back into a regular school model. So we wanted to give them a couple of weeks for, you know, teachers, schools to figure out their schedules and then see where they fit in. And we're excited that Playworks has, you'll see the contract next week. But what they've done is they have agreed to shift their hours a little so they're available after school to support our after school program, a little with students to be engaged in more active, structured opportunities. And then they do some live, you know, recess and lunch activities as an, on an optional basis. And in addition, provide some coaching, junior coaching and social emotional learning support along with teachers in the classrooms. So that's kind of our focus, student engagement, deepening on instruction and rigor, making sure we don't be students behind, and then adding in our, you know, more robust options for our students to stay engaged.
So I have a little question for, you know, I talked to a teacher a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know how it's going now, but like, let's say, for example, like last year, she was telling me she had a sixth grader and the kid was pretty much responsible for getting himself up in the morning and getting to school. So when he wasn't there in the morning like that, she would let the office know and the office would call, you know, immediately. And with, now the teachers are in charge of attendance and are they're in, will the, will the office still be partnering with teachers like that?
Yeah.
And calling families? Because, you know, I just worry with them, you know, with all the tech stuff at the site, like I, if the office calls and they say, oh, I can't get on, like, would they immediately be able to help the family get on to, like, talk them through it? Like, is that, is that what is happening right now?
Yes, it will. That's the process we're putting in place. The office is definitely going to be involved. The outreach liaisons are going to be involved. The administration is going to be involved. So there's going to be like a tiered approach. So the teacher takes the attendance. And then there's a, you know, the first school messenger, the call goes out, the robocall goes out, saying your child isn't here. But then the student may come in later. If they don't come in, then the front office staff will follow up, make a call, have communication with the parent. So there is going to be an ongoing process. So we really are making sure we're connecting with every student and every family to support them in the student being there. That's really important. Yes.
Okay, I just was checking because it was kind of confusing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Rob is next.
All right. Good evening, Board. So I've got a couple quick things to share with you that is new since our last update from a couple of weeks ago. We've been with a kind of a herculean effort by a small group of people at each of the school sites and our IT staff. About forty-seven hundred devices thus far have been distributed to students, a combination of both iPads and Chromebooks, depending on the both grade and site preference for those. Today, that's only required a small bit of shuffling. So the sites have been pretty well prepared to meet the needs of the students. And, you know, we continue to look forward to that large order of Chromebooks that you all approved a few meetings ago, coming in hopefully right around the first of the year to replace, I'm sure some of the Chromebooks, like Michelle Minas spoke to earlier, that are a couple of years old. So we're going to be continuing to work on distribution, redistribution, and then just touching base with the school sites on a frequent basis to ongoing tech support as we all sort of cut our teeth on supporting the, the virtual learning process from a different perspective. The second thing I wanted to give you guys an update on, we have received and began to distribute a, well, the operations team is considering a pretty important cleaning tool for disinfecting. We ordered eighteen electrostatic disinfectant sprayers. And what these do is they spray a hospital-grade disinfectant and it allows a, a. and it allows a um, a larger area to be disinfected in a um pretty brief amount of time. Our operations manager, Kathy Rouse, has begun the training of the custodians. Um, she act- and her commitment is to have all training completed by September eleventh. So I'm really pleased with her for getting that done, so thank you, Kathy. And um, so far, the training's been going well with the custodians and we think this will be just another effective tool in the um site custodians and just everybody else's tool belt to help ensure that the schools are gonna be as safe as they possibly can. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Rob. Lori.
Uh, hello, good evening, just a super quick update for food service. Uh, the good news is this week we have served more meals than last week, so I'm super pleased with that. And based on input from the team members in the field, we've expanded our service window. So breakfast and lunch bundles are now available from ten in the morning till one thirty in the afternoon. And the students or a family member can come pick them up. They don't necessarily have to pick up a meal bundle at the school they're enrolled in. They can pick up a meal bundle at the school that's closest to their home. And I will be working with Sedexo and Aali as well as trying to beef up our marketing a little bit because also from, based on back uh from the team in the field, they feel like some families may not know that we're serving meals at all to sites. So definitely want to do some outreach there to try to uh reach a broader audience. And then I also am working with my colleagues in Santa Clara County, we're try- trying to come up with innovative options for getting meals to students.
Yeah, we're exploring expanding the window further and even um there's some neighboring districts that have a single distribution day, um, and you get all your meals at once on that day. Um, those districts have a far lower percentage of free and reduced lunch and so just the the cost of it is a little bit different and there's more challenges too because it's, you're distributing different types of food, less fresh food if it's gonna last for a whole week. Um, so we're exploring that, but we have different channel, like, for example, Cupertino does that. So we have more challenges than they do with that, just having it cost out. But we're open to um all good ideas.
Um, so Mike and Lori, I know over the summer we were giving food to anybody who asked for it and we're still allowed to do that till October first, is that true or no? Okay, there was something that was happening October first where they were making it even harder, where you had to show an ID or something from?
That's, yeah, that's now, they're saying that, they're saying that that's October first. That was my question, is like, why did we start with the beginning of the school year?
Once school starts, all of the USD wa- USDA waivers for uh the seamless summer offering free food go away. And like I said before, they can pick up food and a family member can pick up food. This doesn't necessarily have to be the student, it could be their parent, it could be a sibling, it could be grandma or grandpa, as long as they know the student name and the team in the field have a roster of all of the students. So if a Lakewood student wanted to pick up at Fairwood or CMS, it it's okay.
Well, I just, I feel like, you know, if you have a team of four and they're selling one meal a day for a week and then this week it's better because they're selling four meals in a day, like, it's just, it's so depressing because, number one, I mean, everybody's a hard worker and they want to work and they want to like make more than ten bags of food and and not throw away.
..........................................................................................................................................
Say advertise, uh, you know, or put up something on our website. I mean, I think, you know, if you're, if you're a mom and you've got like a little kid and you've got a middle schooler and a grade schooler and a high schooler, it's really hard, it's like your window to go get lunch for people. You have to make lunch for the other kids anyway and, you know, it's just, it's just so uh non-family friendly, so, Reed, wasn't there a thing where we can sign, there's a big letter going to the state legislature, to the federal government or something, like, we as board members can sign on to that and?
Yeah, I don't know where that exact letter is, but they did talk about that in the Santa Clara County Board meeting today, that this is a push that people are really trying to prioritize and try to get the state to approve um more free food services. So we just need to keep our eye on that.
So Lori, how many people were served over the summer when it was just community feeding, like, compared to now? Or compared to the school year, like, how many people were, how many meals were we really serving?
The last week of service, which was the week ending Aug- August fourteenth, we served a little over eleven thousand meals.
Yeah, and so, and how many are we serving now?
Uh, so last week we served five hundred and sixty-six, so far this week, seven hundred.
From, from, per week, per week, yeah.
Three days last week, five sixty-six, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, this week, seven hundred.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if, it's not just Cupertino, it's Santa Clara, it's several other districts, right? Who are doing the fi- five meals in one day. Are they getting their numbers in general or for the free and reduced or?
Based on our county, called, meals are down uh countywide, there, there was a district, I think it was Union or Cambria, and I can't remember honestly, but they went from six thousand meals to fifty.
Why do you think this is happening? This doesn't make sense, it seems like it would be the opposite. Like, it seems like as school starts, people would think to try to get more meals. What do you think's hap-
I think because they have to go midday, you know, and if you have a little kid or whatever, I mean, we had that one email over the summer where that mom was saying, can I just pick it up at five o'clock, you know, can I pick, can I pick it up at five for the next day or something? Because I think it's, maybe there's something we could partner with the PTAs for pickups or something. Okay, well, I'm interested in keeping an eye on that.
So what, what, yeah, what's important for me, um, I'm on the uh Santa Clara County um School Board's Legislative Action Group and so having those stories um make it real for people who are in the, who are in the process. So if you could let us know about it, um, that would be helpful.
Yeah, because I think that the story, part of the story is our constraints with our budget. Um, the way our budget is structured, we, if we don't serve the meals, we lose money, right? Because we have our labor as a fixed cost. Um, so um, anything we can, anything we can do for forgiveness for the the cost and to encourage people to take meals is is mutually beneficial.
Mike, what were you saying last meeting or a recent meeting about Sunnyvale Community Services pitching in? What was that um in regard, do you remember?
Oh, um, that was, um, Bridget sort of helped with that. Um, so there are students that are at the shelter, so the kids at the shelter that are ours, I think actually Bridget, you're the one that takes the the meals to them, um, she volunteers to do that. Um, but then there's other kids at the shelter, maybe even in the same family, that aren't our students, so they don't qualify for meals. And so that didn't feel right. So what Sunnyvale Community Services said is they'd use their, our kids' our community money and they can pay us so that we can provide those meals for kids who aren't our students.
That's awesome, thank you guys, thanks Bridget.
Because they're, otherwise the kids are just gonna share the meals. You know, they're just gonna be like, well, the elementary and middle school kids are gonna get the food, but who's gonna get the orange and? And I sort of feel, I mean, I just, it just kills me if, it just kills me that we're not, we're not able to get those kids on free and reduced.
Yep, we're, we're, that's top of mind, that's job one, we're really working on that.
Okay.
Okay, um, there was one last item, board, for your consideration. One of the board members has asked that we um place on a future agenda um the topic of bathroom safety. And we wanted to get um consensus from the board if that's a topic that you would like to um have as an action item for a future board meeting.
So let me just say that I talked to Rob and Mike and we had a lovely discussion for about thirty-five minutes about toilets and how the toilet lid is the mask of the toilet, the toilet. So imagine, imagine being, imagine having someone sneezing your face with a mask on and imagine someone sneezing in your face with a mask off. And so if you're wearing a mask, it's great for protecting this part, but not your eyeballs and the whole lingering thing. And Rob assured me that it's not a huge cost item in comparison with some of the other things we're shelling out for safety. But it would mean that I would be embarrassing for me because I would be the one who is saying, hey, teachers, we have to, we're giving you lids and we'd like you to shut them because if you have, happen to have COVID in your poop, um, even though it'd be pleasant for you to just sit around in your, in your COVID aroma after flushing, um, please protect everyone else by putting the lid down and?
But Bridget, there, I mean, from what I've read, there really isn't any statistical evidence that this has been a way that COVID has actually been transmitted, that that would be my.
There is a study that came out in June and it, it shows, there's diagrams, it shows the aspiration, it's not picked up by the CDC.
Well, I think it was CNN and I think it wasn't really, like, I I think there's been some disapproval.
We're not gonna have a discussion right now about it. If there are three board members who would like to have a further discussion on this and make this a priority, then we will put it on agenda. If there are not three board members who want to do that, then we will not, so.
Are you looking for like thumbs up kind of thing?
Sure, I would say, are there three board members who want to make this a priority at a board meeting?
Well, I guess, I guess the word.
It's not a priority at a board meeting, it's, come on, you know?
I'm willing to, I'm willing to discuss it, so I'm willing to discuss it. I'm willing to bring it back for uh for discussion purposes with possible action.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't.
There, right, there are other things that are more important, I feel like, in safety stuff that we've been given direction on.
Um, so I appreciate the covers, but the covers add on additional lo- layers of complexity. Uh, until I get more information, um, community-wise, I'm not, I'm not sure if a discussion is going to yield the outcome that you desire because it hasn't gotten traction thus far, so I'm, I'm, you know.
Do you'd like to see, so you think there needs to be more studies that come out about it before you'd consider talking about it?
What I'm saying is that, uh, it isn't just a cover. There's, it, it adds layers of complexity to that, that um, um, from a implementation perspective, may um have offsetting values. And I, uh, so, I can hold on this particular issue for the time being. If something comes up uh with more information, um, then I'm willing to discuss it further.
Maybe we will table it for now and then in a month or two, we can, if there are new recommendations or additional information, we can check in on it again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I guess the last thing I would say is if you think back to two weeks ago when we had our COVID updates, the million things that um the team worked on and reported to you and just a few minutes ago, they just concluded with another million things that of updates and it's just amazing how hard everyone is working um to come up with this um best program we can possibly come up with in these difficult circumstances. So I'm extraordinarily proud of this team and right on down to uh the classrooms and everyone in the organization's really pitching in. I'm really impressed. And that's it.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, team. Um, I just had, I have not questions related to this that need to be answered tonight, but I'm hoping next week, I know with the, I think it's the Learning Continuing Plan or I don't, the LCP, whatever that is. I just have a couple of questions that I'm hoping next week that we can kind of dive into. So one is related to the new guidance that just came out this week from the California Department of Health um about, I'm trying to find that. So it just says, um, counties on the state's COVID-nineteen monitoring list can offer in-person targeted specialized support and services to small groups of students. The document indicates students with disabilities should be prioritized and the document also states that the following groups may be prioritized, English learners, students at higher risk of further learning loss or not participating in distance learning, students at risk of abuse or neglect, foster youth, and students experiencing homelessness. Um, so I'm hoping next week to just get more information um about that, kind of where we as a district are at with it. Just kind of.
Michelle, Mary Ann, Mary Ann talked about this a lot today in the meeting and um definitely she's looking for a little bit more clarity, but the good news is that it doesn't require a waiver. And um I think a lot of districts are interested in it. So I agree, like, it's, could be something that we could pursue, it would be great.
And actually, it absolutely is our next step and it kind of fits our plan, which was to get started, then to see how things are doing, see how individual students are doing, and now to come up with plans to meet the needs of those students. So it's next in line. So actually, the timing of that um for us matches our need. So that's.
Yeah, and it matches the phases that we've outlined.
Yeah.
A month ago, that's exactly our next step.
Without needing a waiver, which is nice, so.
Yes.
So you're gonna come up with plans and figure it out. Um, and I think it falls in line really great with our equity as well, right? The, I can't remember the exact phrasing, but our wording of giving students, you know, students what they need when they need it. Um, and then the other piece that I would um love some more information about next week, um, and I think it was one of the questions that I had sent in too. Um, but as, like, as we're starting this unusual school year, um, how are we gonna know if we're, if our teachers, how might I say? Like, how will we know if our teachers are feeling supported? And then how will we know what resources they need? So kind of understanding the process of that, because I think there are gonna, teachers always need support, but there's more this year, right? And I'm sure the workshops are doing Wednesdays. So just more information about that I would love to get next week. Okay, board, is there any other um questions specific for tonight or information you'd love to have um next week? Are we good to move on?
Um, I think for like next week, I'm also interested in hearing um a little, a little more about the balance for teachers' time, like Michelle's saying about them being supported. But like, um, I know that um there's a lot of things, uh, like, a lot of meetings are happening on the Wednesday, not, there's training on Wednesday, Wednesday was gonna be a prep time. I know some of that's gonna happen in collaboration, but I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to that. Um, you know, having been a new teacher myself. Um, and now everyone's a new teacher, I've been hearing that a lot lately, this is a first year for everyone. Um, and then the, for the family support, um, you know, whether it's maybe thinking more holistically about supporting the families, like, um, it, you know, uh, if Jonathan Watts is having his office hours again, is there something like that for families? Um, are there gonna be, you know, suggestions to families about how they can form? Like, uh, like I was talking to a friend of mine and she said, oh, well, we've, we sort of formed a pod with another family and they have two kids and we have two kids and we're trading off every other day and.
Cambiamos. Un lugar donde los padres pueden hablar de este tipo de cosas para crear conexiones. ¿Cómo se puede crear un espacio de diálogo? Estoy interesada en.
Family support from the district side, but then also kind of supporting the whole.
Para apoyar a toda la familia.
Yeah, Bridget, I agree with that and I also really love, there was, um, one of the public spoke about having um the kids enable, enable relationships between the kids. And I've been thinking about that a lot because that's what's really missing with this virtual learning and especially with independent study where the kids aren't even in a classroom. So if we can figure out a way to just help enable the communication, it seems like it wouldn't be that hard. Um, you know, just to either share contact information, have a. Um, you know, just to either share contact information, have a set Zoom once a week where all the kids can just have free time, maybe off hours. I don't know. But if there's a way for us to encourage our teachers to figure out a way to enable that communication, I think that would be really helpful because it's so isolating. And that's what we're missing with this weird new world. We're just missing the connection. So as much as we can enhance that.
Or maybe with the PTA or like as a school or district wide or something, something that takes it off of the teachers as well. I mean, I know like within the classroom, they'll know who the other families are, but you know, as far as just like the social side of things, it seems like that could be something that we.
Yeah, I think we could do a combination. I think that's a great idea to do schoolwide stuff too.
So, um, my concern, I would like to be able to check in again with the Juntos program and what, um, have we, uh, done or are doing to support those families? And, um, I'm mindful of the, um, uh, awareness that not all parents have English language fluency. What are we doing to provide opportunities for parents to be able to support their children? Who are not, i- i- if, if the only level of instruction that we're giving is in English, what other alternatives are we offering for, for, um, families or care providers who do not speak English such that they can support their, um, student in, uh, more hands-on ways that they're being asked to, to do. It's different than in a classroom setting where the teacher is there and is the primary person who is responsible for checking, understanding about English and also monitoring the level of work that the student is doing. Parents are being asked to, um, be those hands and eyes on the process too, to do that more immediate support. So how are we supporting those parents, um, uh, to do the work that, um, as partners, they're being asked to do in ways that they haven't, um, uh, we haven't asked, previously to the, to that same high level. I, you know, this is different than homework help. This is actually hands-on help.
I think let's maybe right now do a five minute break. Um, I know it's a little bit early, but then our next discussion is going to be a fairly long discussion. So let's do a five minute break. So we will come back at eight eighteen and then we will dive into, um, four B, but it's kind of really four B A. So the discussion on the equity action plan. I mean, board members, maybe during the break, pull up the, the email that Mike sent with kind of the, kind of agenda outline of the things we're going to talk about. That would probably be a little bit helpful.
I can share the screen too, if that's helpful.
Oh, that would be great too. Mike, we can do that later. Thanks. Okay. So we will come back, um, in four and a half minutes.
So.
All right. So we're all here. Um, Mike, why don't I turn over to you? And I wonder for discussion sake, if it would be easier for those who are not board members, who aren't actively speaking to maybe put their video off. And then if they are speaking, then maybe come back on so we can see you. So then it's easier for us, board members to kind of see each other and discuss. We love you all staff, but it will make it easier to try to have a discussion. Then of course, as you're talking, please put your video back on. All right. Mike, I will kind of turn it over to you to.
Okay. So our focus tonight is, um, the development of our equity plan. And, um, of course Bridgette and Nancy did a great deal of work on this, went to trainings and everything else last year. And then we've already had one, I guess it was June 20th. I want to say was the last study session we had on this. We've developed an equity statement. Um, we've done a lot of work. And so now the, um, the question is like, what are the next steps? So, um, I sent you a separate document that had on it, um, our mission statement, our vision statement, the equity statement, which I think is awesome. Cause I think we now include that with those other two. And then also the focus areas, um, that we discussed or that the board discussed last time in January. And it's funny, when you go through this, how much has changed and how much we've accomplished too. To bring us to this point. And I guess I, I wanted to include all that to put everything in context. I think equity or really any other focus area that we have should be integrated with everything that we do. So that's really important. So, um, that's, that's there as a document for our reference and we can go back to it. I think if that's necessary, um, as we go through the meeting. Uh, but now if we, if we go to the main document, that's titled at the Equity Discussion Plan. There's a bunch of steps I wanted to go through to kind of organize the discussion. And these are just suggestions. We can go in any direction that we want, of course. But to just kind of organize it to make sure that we have a flow to, um, to our meeting. And I don't know, Michelle, if you have an idea about how long you want to take on this to help gauge the, the time on each.
Um, I mean, it's tricky. I, I was hoping would give, you know, sixty to seventy-five minutes. But I also was thinking we'd be able to start at, you know, like seven forty-five. So I don't, maybe let's do an hour. It's just tricky because we have that other closed session item that's going to take some time as well.
Yeah.
And later in the evening is rough for lots of us.
And maybe we can just kind of see how we do. Uh, I think number three, um, developing goals and a timeline for the equity action plan. That's, I think I put that in the email to you all. That's the meat of it. Um, so that's really important. So we want to make sure we have time for that.
So I was just gonna say, I think in the June meeting, we didn't, we didn't even get to the equity plan. I mean, we talked, Nicole was there and we talked about some other stuff, but then we didn't actually go through it. So I think, I think an hour is a good time budget for now.
Okay.
As long as we can come back to it.
And if we get bogged, um, and there isn't consensus, um, we know that, um, we need to live with non-closure. That's, that's Nicole's mantra. So if, if there's agreement to continue to move on, because a lot of this is process and there's the individual work and then there's the group work. And, and we might not be able to get to the depth that people want to tonight, but let's see how far we can go.
And I think part of it too is deciding what would be the next steps. Do we want to have another study session on this? Do we want to dedicate it as a, as a discussion item on our, on a regular board agenda? I, there's all kinds of things we could do. But anyway, why don't we get started? Um, so the first question, and, and I developed this in collaboration with several of the board members. So, um, it wasn't just me sitting in a room thinking on this on my own. But the first question is, what are the board's focus areas or intentions now? So, uh, we intentionally didn't use the word goals, but like, what are we focusing on right now? Um, and so to start the discussion, as you can see, um, number one, or A is developing an equity action plan. I think that's a pretty high priority for the board. Um, so you can think about that. Second is, um, really governance team development. And so there's me who's new. We're going to get a new board member, um, adding also, it's great to add, but it also means that we're subtracting. And we have to think about, um, the impact of the loss of members and the addition of members. Um, and what, and what we want to do about that. So that's a focus area for this year, I think. Obviously, I think supporting independent study and virtual school, like, you know, having the COVID-19 updates and all the questions that are just constantly coming up about that, that's, that's a focus with equity as a lens. Um, and I think supporting our most vulnerable students, um, might be considered a pretty high focus with equity as a lens. So with that, um, what are your thoughts about those as focus areas or intentions? Or is that even the right question?
I like those. Um, I think it's good. I just had two other thoughts that might not be at the very top, but just something to consider, which is curriculum, you know, just like ensuring that when we look at curriculum, when we, um, think about our curriculum as our teachers are teaching, that we ensure that we're using equity as a lens, because certainly there are some things out there that aren't equitable in terms of curriculum. And then also obviously professional development. I think there's always room for more. One of the things that I remember from a little while back is I went into a classroom and a teacher was saying to the students, okay, boys and girls, go home to your mom and dad and tell them blah, blah, blah. And I just kind of freaked out a little bit because number one, there's obviously the gender identity issue, which boys and girls is a little bit more old school to say, we just want to be a little conscious. And then secondly, mom and dad, not everybody has a mom and dad. So, you know, there's just little things like that where I think, um, PD comes in. So, and it's, it's hard to change that lens sometimes, but.
Um, so Reed, I'm glad that you called that out, but I think that's also, we talk about supporting independent study, virtual school and supporting our most vulnerable students. It's raising that level of awareness through, throughout. I agree. I agree. But that's what I envisioned, that it's embedded in there, but I'm glad that you called it out for.
Yeah, that's more, it's more of a, it's more detailed than what we're talking about at a high level. I understand.
Yeah, but yeah, I agree too that curriculum is as important as schooling and. Thank you for sharing. All right. So board, are we, does this feel like a good focus area list? Um, if you have the other, um, the other page that Mike had for us, right? The, in January, where we kind of talked about some things, right? But that was before COVID, which not that they're not important, um, they are still things we're considering. But just kind of where are the focus areas? So are we good with?
I'm wondering if we want to, um, you know, last year, one of, last year, who was it? Um, family engagement and partnering, economic, social, emotional learning. Like, these are much more specific, I think, um, than that, but I think it's okay. Um, do, uh, I guess it's just organized differently than last year. I'm okay with these ones for a focus on it. I feel like, you know, you don't see social, emotional learning in there, but then again, if you said, well, that's what we mean by supporting them. Like, you know what I mean?
All the stuff you're bringing up and I brought up are things that can be part of what's already here.
Right. And, and we're supporting not, uh, so we're supporting families, students and staff in the support that we're offering for independent study and virtual school. So it's not just, it's not solely student focused. It's more holistic in, in, um, that approach of what we need to be equitable.
Okay.
I think like, you know, so we had, you know, January, family engagement and partnering. And I think in some way, we still have a long way to go, but the distance learning is forcing that even more so, right? Schooling would not exist without family engagement in a way higher level than ever has been before. Um, so I do feel like it's not that those things are not going to get lost, right? They are embedded in these kind of broader, that's how I look at it at least. Okay. So we're good with, so I guess it'll really be, so A through D would be our focus areas for this school year. We're all good with that?
Um, yeah, I was gonna say students slash families.
Supporting our most vulnerable students slash families. Yeah.
I think slash families. Okay. That sounds great. Okay. So we're on to number two, right?
Yeah. So for number two, um, as I was talking to different ones of you, I, we just kind of came up with different questions that we should consider. I don't know that I necessarily have the answer for each of these or any, we can discuss this as long as any of us wants to. Um, but these are just questions to consider as we develop an equity plan, um, or really any kind of plan. And so the first one is what is the board's role? What is the role of staff? I think that's, that should always be, um, can be tricky, but like board is policy, staff is doing the work. Board checks to make sure, you know, has, um, periodic checks to make sure that the work is being done, like in keeping with their vision, checks in with each other. So we could have a discussion about that. Um, in terms of an equity plan, there sometimes is a, um, a desire or it's kind of human nature to go and do something. Um, and sometimes that can lead to change and isolation. I was trying to think of the best word for that, that, um, you might fix something, um, which might be worthwhile, but that doesn't necessarily change the system. It isn't necessarily a systemic change around, in this case, equity. So to be aware of that. Um, and neither one is good or bad. Well, they're, they're both good. But just to be aware of it as we develop.
Well, I, I think what we want to avoid is a checkoff list.
Thank you.
And, and that's the, you know, we, we want to celebrate wins. But it needs to be something that it, that has, that's sustainable and has longer term implications to move us forward.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, I would envision that the, you know, if we did put together an equity team, like if we did put together people from the district who were working on this, that perhaps the board would have some discussion about the kinds of things that we really wanted to make sure that the team was looking at. So whether that's, you know, or maybe they would, maybe the team would come up with it and we would, they would have a check-in with the board and say, hey, we want to look at hiring and retention. And we want to look at our anti, we want to make sure our curriculum is anti-bias curriculum. Or we want to make sure our employees feel safe to talk to us about bias that they're experiencing, you know? And we think these are our ideas around this stuff and we want to, we want to investigate and see where we're at now. Because I think the first year, we, we don't really have an understand, we don't have a framework to like go and dig deep into these areas. And I think that, I think that would be a beneficial first step. So like my vision of how the board would work is I don't want to come up with the categories. I want the team to come up with the categories, but I want to check in and have a discussion about it and say, like, you know, um, you know, are you, are you thinking about, um, like, uh, data and analytics or school leadership or, you know, like what kinds of things are we doing that, you know, that, that we might think of, that the team didn't think of, or the team might have had it all figured out and we just go, yes, keep going. I mean, that's what I'm sort of hoping for. I'm not planning on doing the work, but I'm planning to be, you know, an enthusiastic partner.
I, I agree with that kind of vision essentially as well.
Okay. Then the, the last one, um, with one of you, I forget which, uh, we were talking about the word inclusion and then the word equity and then the relationship between inclusion and equity. And we kicked around the idea like, maybe it should be an equity inclusion plan. Um, and then we thought, well, does that give short shrift to equity? So like, what's the difference in how are they related? And that's just like a question for thought. And when I mentioned that to Tasha today, she got really excited. But I didn't, she didn't talk about it. So she might want to talk about it now.
I would love to hear from Tasha.
I want to hear her excitement about.
I was gonna say, I want to hear too.
With that buildup, right?
Woo, that's a bit, that's a big buildup. I don't know. Um, well, it excited me because we talk about them as they're two separate things, but they are very inclusive. And so even as we talk about equity, um, I think we've, we've kind of gone back and forth on our, our descriptors. But if we keep going back to the statement that we've created, the whole premise of it is to be inclusive. And sometimes unfortunately, because the word inclusion has been attached to special education, our brains go directly there. But are really what we've been trying to talk about as a school district is inclusivity. And the equity statement is basically a statement to allow us to be inclusive. And so that's.
So inclusion is part of equity. I mean, and that's what I was thinking when, when I read this. I was like, well, I feel like if you're talking about equity, inclusion is part of that. That's part of being equitable. Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, it is. But we have to call it out. And a lot of, uh, you know, the questions as a board you've asked us, uh, the, the questions our community asks us. It is about that. Have you thought about me? Did you think about me? You know, that's one thing. So if we're looking at this work. the many different lenses that we have to, that's what excites me about that, that our goal, and when we realize we fall in charge, we own that and we do something about it, will we have the capacity to do so?
Yeah, I would love, I would love for our, I would love inclusion to be called out. I would, personally, I would also, you know, I mean, I've seen a few other school districts have, you know, specific anti racism language in their equity statement, which we don't have. I would also like to see that. I would like to revisit the equity statement to to add a sentence about anti racism, but I don't know that everyone on our board has read the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist. And I don't know if that's the right lens. So, you know, maybe there's something else that's a better fit, but that is my feeling. I feel, you know, every day I'm watching the news and I, I am just, I'm feeling it today. But I would love to have the word inclusion in our equity policy. I would love to to have it be called out. And.
Okay, so when you're you, you're talking about two different things. So what we need to do is go back to our equity policy. And I think if we go back to the equity policy, you'll see that there are a lot more touch points in there that you might not see if you just look at the equity statement.
Right.
So looking at that policy is is the gives a structure.
Well, so what I was thinking was is that we're gonna, you know, like if the school, if the school, individual school sites take our equity statement and they try to figure out what that means to them, that's why I'm saying maybe some things that are touch points in our policy regarding inclusion, regarding anti bias practices and stuff. Maybe we need to put a couple more sentences in our in our equity statement so that it's super like, so that that's just explicitly there, because we're going to be asking the school sites and or, you know, I think Mike and I talked about it where that was like one idea where they were gonna work on that with what's her name, Nicole? And do some professional development around like, thinking about it at their site. So even though it's one more step, maybe it would be good to kind of take a peek at that policy one more time, if that's where, if it's already there.
I think looking at the policy is going to give us indicators for other things that we need to set up as well. So looking at the policy, that's the backbone that guides staff around this, and keeping the equity statement simpler allows it to be more accessible. The equity statement isn't supposed to be so prescriptive. The policy, the policy gives the areas of of the guidance and domain.
We provide the policy along with the equity statement to our principals and to our schools and say, here are some prescriptive ways in which you can actually make this happen. And then make sure we have the anti racist language and the other language that we want to ensure that, to give them ideas about what they can specifically do. Right, because there's so much. I mean, there's so much.
Right, if if you make it so cumbersome, you're not going to be able to see it and internalize it.
So I've made a note for us to make, maybe next month, we'll bring back the equity, equity, equity policy and the equity statement. And kind of let's, we can have a deeper dive specifically on those, because I think going back to like boards roles and staff roles, those are areas where that is board roles. We can maybe work on that next month. But then staff can use that moving forward.
And also, I mean, maybe that's something that when, if we do put together an equity team, maybe that's something that they can also, you know, provide another feedback loop on as far as like, hey, we want to name this the Equity and Inclusion Team, and this is why. And even though it's it's not, you know, like we feel this way, maybe there's, there's a whole bunch of reasons why. We could still have the equity state and inclusion policy, equity policy, we can still have all that stuff. But when we talk about like doing the work, what the team is going to do, how do they organize that? I don't know.
Yeah, what you may want to do is you could certainly in a month, go back and relook at the equity statement. That's an option. Another option is once we start pushing this out to the schools, the principals, and they start working with their staff, and they start collecting data and bringing the data back to some sort of leadership team, that that's what we're getting to in number three here. Then that team may come back to you and say, here's what we heard, here's the data that we gathered, and we think, whatever they think, right, inclusion is incorporated or inclusion should be added, or we need to be more specific, less specific, once we collect that data.
I like that idea of putting it out there and then kind of seeing what we get back. I know Mala was trying to talk earlier and Tasha came off her video too, so I'm wondering what they had to say.
Hold on just a second.
Hi, Mala. Okay.
I was briefly gonna say, I liked Tasha when you, I liked Tasha when you shared the that idea of inclusion, right? Often in education language, when we hear inclusion, and that is, my mind does go to special ed. So that is a, right, making sure that if we're going to use it, that we're kind of defining how we're using the word inclusion, meaning more than just special, which that is an important piece of it.
And.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Bring back our inclusion policy that we adopted, but we had, and we sent it off to CSBA to have them do something with it, but we can own it and we don't need to necessarily have CSBA bless it. We can own it.
And then, and then Mala.
Yeah, so I I totally support everything that's being said. And I just want to point out, you know, not to really be too picky on words. But I want to make sure we address that inclusion, because inclusion can be also heard as being included within a group or a structure. And we want to recognize and appreciate and honor every individual for who they are and not have them be part of any preconceived structure or group. I just want to put that thought in there as we are thinking of what inclusion can mean.
That's deep, Mala. That's deep.
You see my color? So I just want to point that out as we're being mindful of how we phrase it. The intention, there's no question about.
Thank you for sharing that perspective. Very helpful. This is why I love our team. We have such a great, diverse group who gives such good insights. Okay.
Moving forward.
We kind of, yeah, I would say we kind of already started three a little bit ish, I think, Mike, right?
Yeah, so three is kind of the meat. And so as people were saying, like, the idea is like, it's time to, I think what's, and this really came from my discussion with Nicole. I talked to her for a good 90 minutes last week and about this meeting and what our next step should do. And what she really said was, you have an equity statement, which is a definition of equity. That's how she looks at it. And she, of course, said, like, she said it when she met with us before, you know, we're going to come back to it, we may revise it. But the next step is that's living at the, that's now living at the board level and with with us. The next step is to bring that out to the sites and have them start to internalize it and collect data on it. And not to make it onerous, because they're just starting out. But just to be keeping track of as they, and this is the part that Nicole really wants to help the sites with, is to have them kick around the equity statement, collect data about some, I think what we put glows and grows. So the glows are like the things that that they're really proud of. They think it aligns really well with the equity statement and the equity policy. I have to keep remembering to say that. And what are some areas like, oh, as we look at this, we can see this is an area for focus. Not necessarily telling the teams, you've got to fix that right now. Like, that's not the step at at this point. But if we accomplished that this year, that each site had some was required to do some work around internalizing the equity statement and collecting data and bringing it back to a team, that would be a good year.
So I'm thinking about this, Mike, and I I love the concept. I'm just thinking about with everything going on right now and just trying to get our foothold with how we're teaching our kids and our teachers adjusting and everything else. How do we get them to internalize an equity statement? Like, what would be the actual? How do they actually do it? Are we asking them to use a Wednesday and spend an hour talking about it? Are we, how do we make that happen? Because I can't picture.
Well, I, you know, I would actually, I don't want to like solve that yet. I mean, I would imagine, like I started talking to Christina about it today, right? Hey, Christine, if you were a principal, how would you do it? And she, that's where she said, like, don't give us like big onerous tasks. But instead, like I envisioned, like someone has a pad of paper and as they're going through their day, like, oh, yeah, I can add something here. I'll make it pretty easy. Yeah, maybe it's a Wednesday, maybe it's leadership teams. I don't know. Mala turned on her camera, so maybe she has some ideas.
Well, yeah, I think what we shared when we talked on Monday about it, Mike, as well, is making it part of their work, making it of what we do in a very intentional way. So yes, a little bit on Wednesday, just to do like a front loading. But the important thing is, when you're doing your grading, when you're looking at your books that you're choosing, you know, for your read allowance, when you're giving examples in your math lesson about the names that you're picking, you know, it's so embedded in everything you're doing. It's when you're asking for some independent work and then talking to the child about, you know, how, why it wasn't completed and knowing what supports they have. It's knowing families, it's a relationship building, it's on so many different layers that it's really, I can see it being most beneficial or impactful if it's embedded in the work we do on a daily basis. So it's not one extra thing. The district is asking me to now do equity work, but it's really being mindful of the work we are already doing.
I think having the discussion, like allowing a little bit of time for the discussion about what equity means to them, and maybe as a school site, they've done, they've already done a lot of equity work, you know, and so maybe if they're looking at that and they talk about it, you know, they, I'm sure that if, I'm sure that they'll have their own, you know.
And. Right, and concurrently, systems and processes that we put in place, because we have to be the role models too of what that looks like. So being even you know, intentional about it and speaking about it at the principal level, at the district level of how maybe we've done some things that we know now through the equity lens that we may need to change. So it's making those systems and processes and then, you know, the tasks that are aligned to the work they do.
Yeah, I think it has to be a safe place for people to be, oh, like Nancy, you know, you were saying, like, to have things unsolved, you know, unresolved, you know, as part of the work, but I mean, we want to work on the things that we don't necessarily know about. Maybe people aren't talking to us about things, you know, that systemically, you know, we could address.
Well, I, I think they've been doing the work. They, we haven't called it equity work, but they've been doing it. And it's more that realization that a lot of the things that they are already, it's not, it's not something more. It's just looking at it and acknowledging this is equity work about the connections with parents, tho- those kinds of things that they're already doing. I understand about creating a safe space. I think that we have a lot of systems that create safe spaces. I think we've, we've had courageous conversations before at school sites. And it's been effective. And it, and I'm trust that our staff can work out opportunities for courageous conversations to take place again. Because there's the the headwork and there's the heart work, and it's an individual journey as well as a, as a group site, district process as well.
I like that idea of safe, right, safe spaces, right? I think that is a, made me think a little bit about as we started the, in the summer, you know, as we were making plans for the reopening, we had kind of those four areas of these are kind of the focus areas as we're, you know, envisioning reopening. So I don't know if we're just like that, where we have like, as we're working on equity work, right, if there's like, I don't know what it will look like. That's one thought. It was like safety, right, and having it be a safe place for all of us, right? Safe when we realize things that we've done that were not okay, right? That it's, it's okay that we've done, I mean, it's not okay that we've done it, but it is okay. Does that make sense, right? Like, that it's safe to say, yes, I have done this in the past and it wasn't okay, and now I'm going to correct it, right? Like, being safe with that, being safe to have hard discussions, being safe to say, this is my experience and I've been treated badly, like all those. It is a very important, I don't know. So I don't know if we want to create a.
I, I, I think we already have those safe spaces. It's a matter of of giving permission for staff to use it for that reflective journey as well. That reflective personal, personal and professional journey that they're on.
And for people to be able to see that actual change will happen as well. Like, if we look into our, you know, even if we have non discriminatory hiring policies in general, I mean, we have, we work really hard at that and we recruit people. Like, how are we doing it mentoring the people that we've recruited? And, you know, like, is, is, are there some other supports we should put in place? And you know, I don't know, I just, I feel like there's some things where where if people feel like there's not going to be a change, they'll be more reluctant to say something. So we have to, I think we have to send a message out that we really are willing to look at our, give ourselves a hard look and and change. You know?
Yeah, and in regard to the safety around discussions of equity, that's something that, and I told Nicole this when I was talking to her the other day. I think she does exceptionally well. She makes it okay, and so I'll just speak for myself as a white male, to take a few risks and to maybe get it wrong, but that means setting up the community that like Mike might say something not exactly right, but don't beat him up. Understand that he's trying, right? And that goes for all of us. And I think Nicole is really good about that. So I put that in my notes for when she works with schools to to really continue that kind of focus.
Great. All right, so the, Mike, on the three, one, the created timeline based on goals for sites and district. We are creating a timeline. Help me understand that one a little bit.
You know, I think number four is create an equity support team. That's, I think we came up with the word support instead of action or instead of leadership to be less like big brotherish. But like, that would be essentially the leadership team. Like, maybe they would be the ones that could come up with a more specific timeline. But broadly speaking, I would say, kind of like I said before, if if these items in number two and number three achieve common understanding of the definition of equity and collecting evidence and data, like if that's what we did this year.
That's enough.
That's a lot.
And evidence and data for positive change. I mean, I understand that we are doing a lot of great things, but it's like, we want to move the needles, so we want to, we want to dig, right? Like, so it's not, it's not a blame game, but it's like, let's look at, let's look at, let's, you know, this, we acknowledge that everyone's working really hard and everyone's doing their best and, but like, let's, this is the time to really to dig in.
Well, this is the, this is the first opportunity. Yes, it's, it's a process. We're not, we're not going to be solving every problem right away. And that's why I like the word wanderings. So we, we wonder where we're at and we wonder where we can go.
Well, it would be nice if with the wanderings, there was some measuring, like when I was talking to the the guy who's doing it at my son's high school, he's, he's on a school board, actually in San Mateo, I think. Hector, I don't know, you might, maybe you, one of you know them, know him. But anyway, he's, he was saying that when they set up their, their year that they spent doing their inquiries and like, you know, just investigations. he was saying that when they set up their, their year that they spent doing their inquiries and like, you know, just investigations and wanderings, they actually were looking at things like, okay, well, what is high impact? And you know, like kind of measuring it like high, medium, low impact and high, medium, low cost in terms of like time to change and, you know, and all that stuff. So that at the end of it, you could kind of measure and say, here's some low hanging fruit. This stuff is low cost in terms of time and whatever, and high impact. And here's some things where, wow, this is going to be a huge amount of time to change. And maybe it's not as much of an impact. So, you know, it'd be nice if it was not completely evaluated, but it would give us an idea of how to move forward.
There's something I've kind of thought about. I was at an education conference last November. And one of the sessions I went to was about design thinking. And then it was, I came specifically, there was like a question we were, each group was working with, but it was related to equity and, but I remember learning that idea, which anyone knows design thinking, I'm just, I'm kind of new to that, but sitting in the problem space, right? So often, and he, and they said often in education worlds, everyone's quick to make, right? Like coming up with solutions, right? Because they're care, we're caregivers and we want to like fix and solve and make things good. And so the idea of being quick to jump to solutions, but that idea of sitting in that problem space, right? So I kind of like that idea of, right? This is the year where we kind of are sitting in the problem space, right? Where we might say, oh, this is an area we're doing well, but hey, as we're looking at the data, right? You're looking, we find some data stuffs, then maybe we ask some questions, right? We don't just see the data and jump quickly to solutions. But we're maybe, you know, looking at the data and asking some more questions. Maybe we dig at the data different more. So that's kind of my vision is this is the, this is the year of we're sitting in the problem area. So not in a negative way though, right?
Right.
Earlier, Bridgette, right? But anyways, that's, that's how I look at it in my head.
You know, and I think Michelle, that's, would be really helpful to, to tell the school teams, to give them permission to do that, because you're right. I can think of numerous times when school, we've told schools or principals have told their staff, like, we just want you to think about this. And then the teachers, because they want to do so much, they run out and they start all these big projects that are, they run ahead of the, the, sitting in the problem space. But on the other hand, if there is some low hanging fruit, let's pick it, right? So that's the, that's the balance, right? And Bridgette, before I lose it, I want to say that I really liked evidence and data for positive change. Because that, that's purposeful, that, that gives the purpose for like why we're collecting the evidence and the data for positive change, not just to collect it, not to beat people up, but to grow.
Reed and Jeff, I would love to, have you got any thoughts? What we talked about so far, jump in, agree with stuff, don't agree with stuff, additional insights?
I'm on board for sure. And I'm also sensitive to the fact that I'm not here for very long. So it's kind of your plan, not mine, although I definitely will jump in when I'm, when I feel strongly.
Well, we still, even though you're going to be gone a few months, we still appreciate your wisdom and experience.
So, so it's our plan. It's not, it, it's our plan.
What did I say?
I said it's yours. Yours. No, it's our, it's our plan. Remember, we set the direction. We aren't always there to see the results, but we set the direction.
I think Reed's saying, Reed is saying yours in the sense that in a few months, she's not a part of the hour.
No, I, I appreciate that. But what I'm saying is that it's, that you're a part of the direction setting. Don't forget to use your voice.
I rarely forget to use my voice, Nancy.
I didn't have a doubt of that. So I, I'd just say she would, she's going to be our truth keeper. She'll, she'll call us on it, even after stuff the board, I'm sure. I'm, I'm actually just, I'm taking it all in because I feel like sometimes I'm learning all over again, just when I think I have a handle on how to be a school board member, I, I get caught up on things because I think with the equity plan, sometimes you kind of want to internalize it and sometimes you're a little afraid of it. I like the way we're rolling it out to the community and get their, their buy-in, their interpretation. I think this is, you know, I want to compliment your leaderships, you know, all of you on this. I think you're bringing it on with well intention. I mean, I think my recent experience, I've just been kind of personalizing things a lot. I, I think I've been kind of going through my own little education, change of lens, starting to realize, you know, eyes are kind of like wider open when I start seeing the inequities of the system. And the awful results as that could occur. And so I think, I think, like even just, even like last meeting, it's kind of personalizing a little bit. You want to take action, you get kind of wrapped up in it, rolled into it. You really want to do something. So you're trying to find definition and trying to find ways of taking action. But I think of an issue this complex and sensitive really just demands more voices coming together to establish agreements. So I, like I said, I'm, I'm kind of in awe of all of you right now. So I do appreciate it and you're educating me right now. So.
I like that idea too. This is complex enough that we need to bring more voices in. That was a good reminder.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, so because of time, what I think what we as a board can do, and I asked us to reflect on this is our job this year is number six. To look at the questions that we need to ask to discern if there's equity in the information in the policies that are being brought to us. And that's where the reflection on what our equity policy is can give us some clues about, about those questions. So it's the questions that we ask in packet review. That's, and that's the opportunities, the questions that we are, are asking that continues to invite us to look deeper, think broader, leverage opportunities, acknowledge the work, acknowledge the gaps, and inform the community of what we're doing. So that's why bringing back the, the board policy is so super important to see if we have enough road, i- if we have enough guide points for us to think about the questions that we need to be asking. Not that everybody has the answers, but these are the questions that we need to ask.
Do we want to get, I saw in number seven that there was, you know, Nicole was eight hours of support for site, feedback from board during site and other presentations, training for cabinet, D O, sharing podcasts. Is there, do we want to bring Nicole back for us or get some additional training for us as a board? To do, to continue this.
Bridgette, I feel like when Isabel comes on, you guys need to kind of redo a lot of this, just because you need to bring her on board. So I think that would be a good time to get Nicole back and just kind of give her, this is where we are now. And I know equity is something she cares deeply about as well. So I know she's going to be, you know, on board with all this stuff, but I think that would be a smart time. I mean, you have to invest when you get a new board member, you have to invest in them. So this is one way I think that would be meaningful.
I agree with your insight.
What about of training for cabinet and D O? What about, what about number four on the next number seven, the sharing readings and podcasts? Mike referred me to a podcast. And go ahead.
Well, before I talk about the podcast.
Or there's books or something. I mean, we could have a club or, or short readings. If no one wants to do a book, we could do chapter or something like that.
I think the continuing reflection and development and professional development for the board and of course for the district office cabinet staff is important because the cabinet is the, the ones that write the policies that they give to you. So we need to be, work together, right? Separately and together on this. So ongoing training and there's lots of ways of doing training. Nicole is, is a really good one. And I think that should be part of it. Because that'll provide consistency with what the schools are getting. But there's other ways too. There's other presenters. There are short readings. We could say like, everyone read this short article and we'll spend 15 minutes talking about it in a board meeting perhaps. Or if there's another study session perhaps.
Podcasts.
Or podcasts. So.
What is the podcast?
So the podcast, it's a New York Times podcast and I actually heard it on NPR, the first part, and there's five sessions on it. And it's called Nice White Parents.
Oh yeah, this is the new cereal. I heard about that and I, I almost watched it on my own, but I didn't. But it's a serial podcast, the same one that did the, the one about the, yeah, you know what I'm talking about cereal? Anyway.
I don't think it is, but maybe it is. I don't know.
Well, it's called cereal. I know it's part of cereal. Anyway.
From the same people who did cereal.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. But anyway, that, that's one, that's, that goes through the history of a, of a school that happens to be in New York City. And attempts from the 1960s to the present day, the cycle repeats itself where it's a low income community and white parents come in every time and they try to help the school. And they find out that the community actually doesn't want their help. There's different.
Yeah. This is where the parents were pushing and pushing to make it happen. And then they wouldn't send their kids after it happened, right? Is that what?
One of the five examples. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's just one example. Like if, if we have some common experiences to reflect on, that's professional development that sometimes that works. I think we want to.
To. Mike, what about the tale of, the tale of $2? That was like two minutes and that was so great.
Things like that are really good too. Yeah. Like just show a video and then talk about it.
So what if, what if we just started putting on once a month on our meetings where we have, where we do one of these, right? So like we'll have a, we'll make it short, small, not like a whole book, right? Where it's an article or the podcast or a short video where that's part of our packet review is to look at that and then we'll, you know, set aside, you know, 15 to 20 minutes to have a discussion about.
So I have an idea of how to free up some time to do that. And my suggestion is on those meetings, and maybe we could do it all the time. But pre-report what our activities are for board comments. And, and let that time be given to actually talking about things that matter to us.
As far as. Don't do board comments, you mean? Just don't do board comments and just put them in somewhere else?
Well, you can send in all your activities. I'm not saying not document what it is that you, you've done, but use that time or repurpose that time for, for a discussion. That's a different kind of board commenting. So.
I feel like that mostly works. I feel like there's our times when somebody right had an event where they need to report out. So I feel like we can't fully get rid of some of those comments. I feel like we really need, or like when a superintendent is sharing some stuff. But I do like that idea of, if we could shorten that time, that would then free up more time. So we don't want to just extend our meetings longer, right? They're already getting too long.
I do think that meetings will be shorter just because things are getting a little calmer. And we don't have, you know, this summer was just crazy with all the chaos and people so upset and teachers so upset and it was rough. But I do think we're getting a little bit more of an equilibrium now. So I don't think we're going to be having four hour board meetings. I think it's our choice to have four hour board meetings. At this point, I'm guessing that it'll be, we'll have a little bit more time. Can I share a tale of $2 for the next one?
Sure.
Yes, and we'll all listen to it.
It's only two minutes and it's so, you guys will like it. So I'll send it to you.
Okay. So do we want to do this once a month or do we want to do it at both of our meetings?
I agree, once a month. I think so too.
Okay. That's what I was kind of thinking, but then I just didn't know. Okay. So everyone is good with that, this idea, right?
Could we, if, if one of them's two minutes, do we, we could start with that one and then can, can we do one that's a little longer?
Well, let's. Our podcast.
Let's see how the two minutes goes.
Can we wait till the seventh next board meeting for that?
Okay. So we will add this on to our agenda for, we will add this, what do we want to call?
Equity, I don't know.
Call it equity discussion?
Sure.
Equity reflections or something.
Equity reflections. Okay. That's a good name. Everyone's good with that.
Okay, I'm sending, I'm sending a tale of $2 to everybody.
Okay. So equity reflections and Reed will lead our first one. Yeah, please, Reed.
Sure. I mean, I'm just going to send it out and then we can just have, I can ask people what they think. Sure. 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 All right.
Great. So where else? So with equity supporting, I think we're all on board with that or support team. I think we all like that idea. So do we, do we want to make a timeline of when that happens or?
Yeah. Like is that something that you, you feel like you could, we want to pull together soon?
I would think so because we want to, I would want to, and I imagine it would be a couple of members of cabinet, Christina was interested, I don't know, like district people, and then a couple of principals and like, okay, let's, let's reasonable and doable and has, and come up, identify the outcomes that we want. So we'd want to do that relatively soon. You know, realizing we're just in the second week of school.
And I have a question. So we have like four says to create an equity support team. And then five, this is under three, not like, but under three, four and three, five, create an equity advisory team. So with the support team, that would be a smaller team. That's really the working group. And then the equity advisory team would be a bigger group, maybe kind of similar to the advisory group we had for planning reopening. The vision.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Other districts have come up with, with, with equity teams that, this is where you engage with the community as well. Because there are, there are stakeholders and partners in, in this and you want a diverse group. But there's time for us to develop that in the following year. It will be easier for this group to develop if there are less restrictions on meetings. And so not this school year, but the following school year that might actually be able to come forward.
Well, like so for the.
Because, because I'll tell.
I mean, for some, some people paid the, like if you were going to invite teachers to be on the, the advisory team, not just families, but also teachers to have a few teachers, like we could.
So, so, so we don't need, so what I'm saying is we don't need to think about what that's going to look like right now. This is not for this year, it's for the following year. So we don't have to decide about that.
No, I mean, I think that the people who would be, if you wanted to get them, I mean, right now we're saying if it's, if it's just, if it's the leader cabinet team and a few other, you know, leaders, it's their time we're asking them to do, right? So we're allocating some of their time to this and that's great. But then if there are other like, so we're thinking like next year would be when we would possibly.
I think that's what the leadership team or the support team would start to, they, they absolutely collect data and see how things are going and work with Nicole. Then we would know when the right time is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. As I said, I don't envision this gathering happening in the, in this academic year.
So that's my initial thought about the advisory team, like when you said not till next year. I mean, I'm okay waiting a little bit, but my initial thought is I don't want to do a whole year's worth of work without a big advisory team like the reopening team.
Well, they're gathered, well, we're gathering, we're gathering information and so they'll have something to understand and know and work with as opposed to asking things in, in isolation. And I will tell you that San Leandro's had a team that they formed, but they haven't been able to meet because of the COVID distance learning teeming to really be effective. And so what I'm asking is that. let's hold off on waiting to, to do this. And as situations change and our capacity to actually meet more in person would be increased, then that's the time to, to do that. We don't need to make this decision now. It's not a, we have to check this off list right now. It'll become apparent and it will happen. And maybe in spring we can revisit this, but.
Well, that advisory, the advisory team wasn't going over details of plans though, right? The advisory team was like, was more like getting people's feedback and stuff, right? Right, Mike? I mean, what was the advisory team? Wasn't it like, are they going with like a general question and you break into groups and discuss it and?
Oh, you're talking about the reopening team?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was interesting. The reopening team met every two weeks and we, at the end of each meeting, we didn't know what the next meeting would be, but then before the meeting we did because things were changing so fast. And we were like, okay, here's the current thing that we're working on. What's your feedback on that? And so I see this advisory team being similar, like I, I don't know what I would talk to them about right now because we're just collecting data. But I think as, like if things go well and we start moving through, you know, it'll be October, November before the principals really start doing this work. I mean, if things are going well and then they start doing the work, maybe like mid to late spring, maybe we'd say, ah, we can start forming an advisory team either for this year or next year. I mean, that's, that's what I see happening.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable to you, Nancy?
Well, that's what I was saying, that we don't need to decide this tonight. It's going to, we have more time to think about it. And being realistic, it's not going to happen right now. It needs to happen later. But, but not super later.
I think I'm just slightly different on it, right? I feel like we don't have to wait till we meet in person, right? The reopening advisory group, in some ways the virtuals, you can't often have as great of discussions, but then more people are participating. So I'm kind of good with you said, Mike, but if we could have an advisory group by more like February.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about it. I'm not concerned about it being on Zoom. Like you say, there's some advantages and some disadvantages. But let's, let's see what, let's see what the data, where the data takes us and when it makes sense.
Sounds good. Okay. So next steps are Mike is going to work to create an equity support team, right? And kind of, and then like the principals and figuring all that kind of stuff out, right? So then maybe we'll check back on that in a month or two. Does that seem reasonable?
I think that's.
Not or two.
Well, we're, we're checking in with the group.
That the same group of people is also creating a brand new way of teaching, right?
Yeah.
So that's why I think month or two, right? Giving flexibility, like this is a priority.
I'll give you updates on how we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not like it's getting done, but like, okay, we, we have a team. We're going to start next month.
It's, it's not a destination. It's, it's a journey. And so making it happen faster isn't necessarily the best thing. You need to allow the process to unfold.
And the, the push and pull here is like, I think we all understand that this is a process and it's a journey. We need to go slow to go fast, but at some point there needs to be action too, right? And so, and we're action oriented. So that's, that's the, the challenge. We don't want to just be talking for five years. So, and I sense that this board is, is pushing itself to like, okay, we'll go slow, but we need, we want to, we want to accomplish things. So that's a good, I think that's a good tension for right now.
Describe that very well, Mike. Thank you. Okay. And then the next steps for the board is what Nancy kind of said, that under three, six. For us to reflect on, what are the questions the board needs to ask to discern if there's equity? And right then that, what Nancy kind of said on Reddit, but what she said about questions we ask in our packets, you know, in our reviews and whatnot. And then we will also, we'll start doing the once a month equity reflections. With the idea of shortening our comments so that we can create that space and time for that.
And then when Isabel comes on, we'll have a board development around equity and team building and whatever.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Are we, we're good with all of that? Yes?
I think so.
Okay. Is there more from this agenda list?
I don't think so. I think we talked about the support. Number eight is the focus areas for the future. I think will be, you know, that might just be a list we continue to add to. There's some of that work that we're already doing. But I think that's, those focus areas are going to come out from the data that we collect. That's what I think.
Okay. Is everyone feeling good? Are we any? This is, right, I mean.
Good job. It's like five minutes to an hour. It's perfect.
And as they're feeling good, it's probably a hard thing, right? Because this equity stuff, right? And the race stuff, we don't feel good about it. It's messy and awful and hard. So saying, do we feel good about this?
I would also.
It's a plan. It's a plan.
You know, and I think, I like the idea of starting slow with Reed's. You know, is it a podcast or an article? What is it? The two minute thing?
It's a little video. It's a video. You'll love it.
So I like that, but I also feel like, you know, we're all doing our own reading and education and watching different stuff like, I just saw the advertisement for something on Netflix, which is like children's stories and they're all like, you know, African American authors and it's.
Rightly has a really good list of.
But it's, but it's like a video and they're performing it and stuff, you know, and, and I'm super excited about watching it. But I mean, as, as we find things like that, like maybe, maybe there's a way where we can not necessarily have it in a board meeting, but where we can have like a, like a placeholder, like a drive document or something, or maybe.
Or just share it, share it with Mike and have him shared out with all of us or give it to Jesus and ask him to send it out to all of us with a packet.
But like, you know, then it goes out and then it's gone. Like I'm just saying like, I don't, I'm not, I don't think it would be in violation of the Brown Act or anything, but just like a, a resource of like videos or great books we've read or, you know, interesting articles. So like when it's shared out, it's not like I'm searching through my email like, who sent that? You know, who sent that and where was it and when was it? Because.
We can create a file. That's not a problem.
A Google Drive maybe, like a Google Drive somewhere.
I think that would be helpful because like Nancy, you've sent out a lot of stuff this summer on early childhood education and some other stuff. And it's like, I'm going back through individual emails, trying to catch up. Yeah. And so.
So here, here's my, here's my reading book.
It's invisible. It's invisible. Hold it in front of your body.
It's cat.
What we could do is as you send those things out, make sure that you include Jesus on the list.
Oh, that's good.
He's a drive expert.
Yes, he'll put it in Google Classroom. He just texted me. And we'll start to, and we can even collect them by category. So that way they're not just lost. Like was it Bridgette? You said that like, yeah, you get the email and like, I want to read that. And then it's.
So, so why I like this is that we're modeling the way. We're, we're doing, and why I call it reflection is that it's the work that you need to, to do and leading by example and showing our, our knowings and vulnerabilities and aha moments is important.
Jesus, thank you for being so on top of that and supporting us.
Always. Thanks, Jesus.
Okay. So we are, we have concluded this discussion for now, correct?
Good job, people.
Final thoughts or words? Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm in looking forward to continue this work, right? That we are making it an intentional part and embedding it in. Okay.
Good job. I'm impressed with you guys. Nice job.
Okay, Michelle, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So like, um, just in terms of like, when would we talk about like things that we would, like if, like when will we talk about like the possibility of having office hours or something like that? Like, would that be a off agenda item or would that be?
That would be, that would be an on agenda item and it's for development.
So would that be like at our next board development meeting? We could talk about that or would it, when we're talking about roles or like just having office hours or something like that? Were we, I thought we were going to have that discussion sometime.
Well, we don't have another board development meeting until November. So I think we could just add that as an agenda item.
Well, and I think at our last discussion, I think we had decided we want to do it. And so we just need to.
Like, do we need to have a meeting where we can talk about it? Can we, can we get that on a, I, I just wanted to know because I thought it was going to come up. We said we were going to have, we were going to do it, but just the logistics of how to do it.
Yeah. So I think we just, I think we just need to, I think it was right before school when all of staff was doing all the preparations, right? So I think we probably now, Mike, would that work if in the next couple of weeks? I don't know. Maybe you and Jesus would kind of.
Well, normally, normally for board office hours, it's just board members. I mean, that's what other boards do. Usually they'll go to a coffee shop and, and just say, we're here from three to four on Tuesday, please come. So. I know, but I'm just saying like two board members can say, we're going to do a Zoom coffee hour. It would be super easy. You don't need Mike or Jesus to do it. You would just say like, Bridgette and I are going to have open board meeting, office hours. So anyone's welcome to come and.
But we, but we don't have a policy around that. So we would need to at least set up some kind of norms and expectations about frequency, who's doing it and what are the expect, what are the expectations about outcomes for the meetings?
And some board members, some boards have it where it's like, you can see on their website, like when you land on the website, it's like this person has office hours this day of the week.
Yeah. I, I think it's fairly casual typically, but Nancy, I thought you were going to go ask around and see what other boards were doing.
Right. I, I will go ahead and do that. Summer kind of got redirected towards COVID land and now that we're back in session, I think we can.
Okay, Nancy, if you could let me and or Michelle know and we can put it on an agenda.
Correct.
Thanks. I'd appreciate that. I thought it just got, I was like, thank you.
Okay. Do we want to go? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll finish through this and then just after we finish through, then we just ask, do we, after we get through consent and public comments, when we adjourn to closed session, do we want to do a five minute break? Or do we want to jump straight in? Should we do a five minute break?
Okay. But I'm open to taking a break if you want a break.
I'm fine either way.
Okay.
I mean, I, I just, yeah.
Let's just go for it.
Say if anybody wants a break, let's do a break. But if nobody wants a break, we'll jump right in. Jeff? Break or jump right in? Jump right in? Okay. Okay. So are we ready to move on to item five?
Consent agenda.
Yeah.
So I'll move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And before we vote, is any, any board members or any members of the public want to pull any of the items off the consent to discuss? Board, you're all good, right?
I'm good.
Not seeing anyone. Okay. Any discussion before we vote? Ready for the vote? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And with that, the motion has passed. And we now are on to item six, public comments on closed session items. So if there's any members to which to speak, please use the raise hand feature now. We'll give it just a moment. All right. Aliyah, I'm not seeing anybody, correct? Okay. We are going to adjourn to closed session and we'll go straight there. So we'll start in just two or three minutes. For all staff who's still on and then for all public who's on, thank you for participating. Thank you for your support. For those who are parents with kids in virtual worlds, while, while I don't know your specific experiences with it. And luckily I don't have a full-time job. I, school board sometimes feels like a full-time job, but it's not quite. But even as a mom who stays at home with her kids, it is a challenge. So I can only imagine those who are also trying to work full-time jobs and navigating the kids when they have a question. My, I was actually talking to Mike earlier today and had to interrupt it twice to help my son who was having troubles. He even started crying one of the times. So I just, we all know that.
I didn't cry.
Not Mike.
Mike wasn't crying. My discussion with Mike because my son was crying. So, so we just, right? We know everyone. And then there's teachers who are, have their kids at home trying to figure it out and teaching, right? So while we don't understand completely everyone's experiences, we are very mindful that these are challenging times for everyone. So grateful for everyone's work and compassion. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That was super touching when that woman was talking about how hard it is. And I just don't know what to say, but it made me super sad. It's rough. It's really rough times.
It is. Okay. So we will adjourn to closed session. And have a good night for those that we don't see when we come back out of closed session.
Okay. Thanks. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Open session at 10:02. In closed session, we discussed public employee performance evaluation of the superintendent. No action was taken. And our future meeting is coming up just next week, Thursday, September 3rd. It's on there, but seven o'clock, I believe, for regular board meeting via Zoom. And with that, I adjourn our meeting at 10:02 as well.
Woo-hoo. Three hours. Good job.